It's uh it's my pleasure to call to order. Our TNRD committee of the, well, it was to be a committee of the whole, but it looks much more like a committee of the half. Uh I do have uh regrets sent from directors Smith, Dieter Singh and Staber, Stamer, who are unable to attend today. Uh the TNRD acknowledges that we connect with many First Nations communities across our vast regional district. And today we're located on the Kukulap Shuputnik territory situated within the unceded ancestral lands of the Shuputnik Nation. And the TNRD appreciates the partnership that we have with the Kukulap Shuputnik and respect the territory and land on which we gather today. There's not very much in the way of announcements, uh other than the fact that I uh remind you that following today's meeting, there will be a staff and uh board barbecue at the Mission Flats facilities, Mission Flats TNRD facilities. And everybody is invited to attend. Uh we have minutes from the April twenty second Committee of the Whole meeting. Move in second, is there any discussion? All in favor? Is anyone opposed? That's carried. And that brings me to our reports. There's a TNRD committee review. Uh Mr. Hildebrand is going to speak to that to begin with, and then um I understand he will be turning the meeting over to Ms. Campbell, who's going to guide us through the uh the recommendations and the discussion. So uh without further ado, Mr. Hildebrand, it's all yours.
Uh thank you Chair Gillis and good morning everyone. Um it's actually going to be the the Deanna Jamie show today, so I just wanted to start with a few opening comments. Um I know this topic of committees has kind of been discussed for for quite a while and um I can tell you that this has been a huge undertaking for for Deanna, for Jamie, um for a lot of the staff. Cause that all provided uh input into uh into these recommendations. So I wanted to personally thank Deanna and Jamie and the entire organization for providing this information. I think it's a well-written report. And I think it'll provide a kind of the basis for a good discussion today. Um our committees have been in place for for a long time, and when we look at them, sometimes they don't necessarily align with our strategic plan. I think the last time we looked at them, we're back in twenty thirteen. Uh so it's certainly a timely topic. Uh and I think that uh going forward, we want to make sure that we're doing things efficiently and effectively. Um I think our committees, like I said, should align with our strategic plan and uh and we're looking forward to the board providing their their guidance and their their input on this. Um so I hope you had a chance to read the twenty-one page report. I've read it a few times now and I think it'd be a good discussion. But uh I look forward to uh whatever that solution ends up being. So if I could, I'd pass it over to Deanna and to Jamie to uh get us rolling.
Just as an aside, Jamie and I decided to add our own photos to this presentation. So this is my photo. Of the lovely electoral area J, um but we have to get through sixty slides before we get to Jamie's uh photo at the end. So just a bit of background and context as to why we did this um review. As Scott mentioned, the last committee review took place in twenty thirteen. There was a committee review that was done in two thousand and seven prior to that. Uh but the twenty thirteen review um resulted in very minor uh housekeeping uh updates to the committees. As Scott also mentioned, um the strategic priorities um of the TNRD board and the focus areas have changed over the years. And the committees have not um necessarily changed um or evolved with those updates and changes. The purpose of statutory committees, um they're committees of the board and the chair, and so they really should align with the board's strategic goals and priorities. So the purpose of the review um was to examine the composition, relevance and effectiveness of TNRD committees and proposed changes uh for community of the whole input and ultimately board approval. So I'm just gonna quickly just go through a a brief committee uh refresher um on statutory committees as well as other non-statutory committees, which are in the legislation. So the Local Government Act uh sets out statutory committees. So the chair and the board uh have the authority to establish those committees for various purposes. Um our committee meetings are governed by our board procedure bylaw. There are some limitations to what committees can do. So for example, they cannot um enact bylaws. And ultimately, all committee recommendations must be approved by the board before they're enforced. A regional district can, board can delegate some of its authority to a committee or a commission. But as per the legislation, this has to be done by way of a delegation of authority by law. Standing committees addressed in the legislation, these are the committees that the TNRD um has primarily. And so they're established by the chair uh for any purpose, sorry, for any matter that the chair considers would be better dealt with by such a committee. And at least one uh member must be a director. And standing committees typically function at a governance level rather than an operational level. And the following points that I'm I'm gonna make are more sort of best practices um in terms of the types of things that go to uh standing committees. So typically they inquire into and report on matters referred to them by the board or matters that are related to the general subject of their of the committee. And they assist the board in fulfilling its mandate. Uh typically they review and discuss draft plans, policies, there's potential changes coming uh to a bylaw um that might be specific to that committee's mandate or subject area. And staff reports brought to standing committees generally seek a recommendation from that committee for the board's approval or action. So select committees are a bit different. They're established by the board rather than the chair. Similarly, though, at least one member uh must be a director. And boards generally establish a short-term select committee um to inquire into a very specific issue. And it's usually for a very limited uh period of time. And currently the TNRD does not have any select committees. Committee of the whole also addressed in Local Government Act. So boards may sit as a committee of the whole as we're doing today um and report findings and recommendations to the board. It's really an opportunity to engage in more informal discussions on ideas and proposals brought forward from staff. Uh it's an opportunity for staff to bring forward items for input and feedback before the items actually go to the board for approval. Uh draft plans, initiatives, proposed bylaw changes, reports, studies are typically things that would go to a committee of the whole. And staff may also present on information or updates. Um they'd like to run by the committee. And we also have external agencies and stakeholders that provide updates and presentations to committee of the whole. Similar to standing and select committees, committee of the whole recommendations must be approved by the board first before they take effect. Commissions are also addressed in legislation, so regional districts do have the authority to establish commissions to share the workload or provide input on more operational matters. So they have advisory rules only. And commissions, unlike committees, do need to be established by a bylaw. And I have some examples up there of the types of uh commissions that are quite common among regional districts. So other types of committees, these are committees not addressed in the legislation, so non-statutory in nature. Advisory committees typically established as a means of seeking input from abroad or select stakeholder group on particular issues. While they're not addressed in the legislation, um the ability of the board to seek external advice from an advisory committee is implied in its corporate powers. And then working groups and engagement groups, again, non-statutory in nature, and the composition could vary. It could be made up of internal staff as well as external uh stakeholders and members of the public or just be internal staff only. They typically inquire into matters and provide input and public local feedback on matters that fall within their associated mandate. We do have a couple of examples here. We have the Blue Rivers, Blue River Trails uh working group. And I believe that's made up of um external stakeholders, members of the public and internal staff. Internally, we have the BDO recommendations working group that's made up of internal staff only tasked with executing on video forensic audit recommendations. I turn it over to Jamie.
Thanks, Deanna. So I'm just gonna do a bit of an overview of what we're gonna walk you through today and 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 how this process was that uh led us to the recommendations we're gonna go through. So um uh and we actually had a whole bunch of staff working on this, not just Deanna and I. Um but so what we did in developing of this report was reviewed each committee individually. So what we looked at within the context of each committee was the legislative framework. So mostly of what Deanna just discussed, how these committees fit into to um the legislative side of things and their authority. We looked at the history of the committee, um including previous iterations of the committees. Those who've been in this board a long time know that we've gone through name changes and restructuring in in the past of different committees. We looked at the member composition and does it make sense or is there recommended changes around the composition? And we looked at the effectiveness of the committee. Now by effectiveness, what I what I'm getting at there is looking at what the mandate of the committee is and then looking at the agendas and recommendations or lack of recommendations coming out of that committee and looking at is that committee actually doing the work it was intended to do when it was established. And then ultimately, after looking at those things, um we're coming forward with recommended improvements uh to those committees. Uh in in many cases, in some cases, we're recommending no changes. Now, I want to clarify before we get into it, we're not at all suggesting through this review that there's any less work to be done. What these recommendations are around is to ensure the correct people and the correct mechanism for getting the same work done. So all the work and and issues that are being discussed by the current committees still needs to be dealt with and discussed. Um and for the most part by committees. So what we're just doing is trying to fit it in. Is it in the right box or is there a better way to 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 deal with that work? So it's it's the work smarter concept, uh not harder. So this um kind of detailed restructure, you have a this in front of you. Um we're really just gonna walk through this piece by piece with you and explain why we came about uh to these recommended changes. But this is intended just to be a summary, so it it may be kind of overwhelming to look at it now, but the intent is afterward walk through this presentation. It'll it'll make a lot more sense of of how we ended up here. So one more thing I want to clarify before we jump in that although what you're seeing in front of you is that the number of standing committees is recommended to be reduced. The actual total number of meetings uh is not expected to change. If anything, it may actually increase. Cause like I said, the work still needs to be done. Um but under this new structure, we may have um as you'll see more um items going to committee of the whole and electoral area directors meetings or um um or being done internally through public consultation processes. But the the total amount of meetings will will be the same.
We address that, we'll address that, yeah.
So what we're gonna do today, and we've discussed this um with the chair, um in terms of the process, is we're gonna present the findings of each committee individually and discuss our recommendations. Um then we'll pause our presentation from a staff perspective, turn it back over to chair to um lead the um the discussion on the recommendation and for the committee to make a a decision moving forward. Uh and then once that decision is made, we'll move on to the next committee. So there is fifteen recommendations or in for the long haul here. We were we we didn't look into it. We may be breaking some records with fifteen recommendations on one report. Um sixty slides, so we're 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 working our way to uh a new record here. All right. All right. So audit committee, when we'll be bouncing back and forth between Deanna and I here.
So what we'll do is just briefly provide a bit of background on the existing committee and then talk about our findings, proposed changes and and then on to the recommendation. So the audit committee was originally established in two thousand and four. I has a mandate to provide recommendations and advice to the board and staff related to applicable financial audit regulations, practices and procedures. The membership is currently uh three members. So as the board will likely recall, there was a number of BDO forensic audit recommendations that came out um with respect to the audit committee uh and some of those recommendations related to the expansion of the scope of the audit committee as well as in terms of reference. We've also heard feedback from current audit committee members before um that there may be value uh and benefit in having a finance uh committee or at least a finance function at the committee level. So we undertook uh quite a bit of research, looking at other local governments, regional districts and municipalities. And finance committees are very common. Um sometimes finance and audit or a combination of both are separate. So staff also see a value and benefit um of a TNRD finance committee, which would still have the audit uh mandate in it as well. And so looking at an expanded mandate uh would potentially include um the committee providing things like advice and recommendations on financial policies, asset management. We we do need to come up with an asset management policy. That's a a big thing that um we're looking at for the future. Uh looking at purchasing and procurement, we have a purchasing and procurement policy coming up as well uh in a review of the budget. So there is our recommendation that the audit committee be restructured as a finance and audit committee with an expanded scope and mandate and increase the membership to a minimum of five directors. And I'd like to also point out that as Director Rain raised yesterday at the board meeting, we are looking to have another audit committee meeting um before the end of this term, and we would hope to bring a revised terms of reference to the audit committee um for review first before it went to the board for approval.
Sorry, Director Christian?
Uh I take direction from you, Mr. Chair, but I I would be prepared to move that. And if there was a second, I'd like to speak to it.
Thank you. I I wasn't quite sure what the procedure was here. Are we going to deal with these recommendations as they come as as okay? Um yeah, then please move it, Director Tracy.
Done.
Director, you've seconded. Thank you.
If I could speak to it, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
So i- in the forensic uh audit, there was some suggestion about the utilization of uh those directors that had uh CPA, et cetera. And I think that's generally at the will of the electorate, who they elect and the qualifications they bring to their position. But uh there also was the suggestion, if you didn't have those credentials, you would find them external to the TNRD and appoint them to the committee. And I understand from your preamble that that would be allowed. Is it your recommendation that that be done?
I hadn't got that far yet. That's a good suggestion, though. Um I don't know, Mr. Hold the brand, do you?
I I think that's um that's what video had asked and like I would agree hundred percent with what you said. I would I would think that if we need to source that and bring in periodic uh folks to to help us out with certain things, then we would do that. So that would be, I would be aligned with that.
Yeah, so the the board can appoint um non-board members to Yeah, so the the board can appoint um, non-board members to their standing committees, so that's certainly certainly an option if if the board feels that that would be a benefit, in particular if the audit committee feels that that would be a benefit, and you're correct, that was one of the recommendations from BDO that there be some a a knowledge and experience base among the finance and audit committee.
We we also talked, if I could just add, we also talked, uh, we are need to go out for RFP, uh, like Director Rain mentioned here shortly with the audit committee meeting again. And that could be part of that scope where we might have some expertise to guide us for, you know, so many hours or so many days a year, whatever that might look like, or up to this certain value of money, so that would work.
Director Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna su- support this, but I I'm I'm wondering, it it says just increase membership to a minimum of five. Um, is this gonna be a board appointed or a chair appointed thing? Cause I think it really should include like the previous one, so an electoral component and big and little municipality component. Rather than just five directors. And the second thing on the idea of uh, bringing uh, an outside advisor, and that sounds like uh, common sense to me. So could we change that to specify directors rather than just five directors?
Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, through the chair to Director Quinn. So we're just proposing a minimum of five directors, and so our plan would be to bring a draft terms of reference to the audit committee. Um, and we would include some of the feedback that we're getting today in terms of the the membership, but it would certainly still include directors. And it's currently a standing committee, so we're not proposing that it um, become another type of committee, it would stay a standing committee with appointments being made by the chair, uh, and we would certainly look at the possibility of having external uh, membership on that committee as well.
Yeah, I I'm happy with the external membership as suggested by by Director Rain, but I I'd just like to see it specified better than just a minimum of five.
And and the board will have an opportunity to approve um, a revised terms of reference that will include the scope, mandate, membership, and all those details.
Yeah, you're handing uh, with all due respect to Chair Gillis, you're handing the power to one person to make those decisions. And I don't necessarily think that's healthy.
Well, that's the, that's the, that's the nature of a of a standing committee is to chair.
I'm aware of that, but if we specify in there, I'll I'll accept going ahead as long as it comes back to the terms of reference. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Director Brown.
I just wanna speak to the comment about having a a certified professional on the board and especially an external one. I don't think, we we already have a CFO that has that experience. Anything that we need internally should be addressed through that CFO. If it isn't, we've got a problem with CFO. We don't need an outside body sitting on this committee to tell us how we should be doing things. Um, we already have an audit committee that checks on us, that's our certification body that comes in afterwards. Do we need financial expertise? Yes. Do we have to have a CPA outside of the CFO? I don't think so. I think we've got our chief financial officer that should be able to handle this. If not, I think we have an issue. That's my, that's my position. If I was the CFO, I would be quite angered that you would bring somebody else in to do my job.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hildebrand.
Um, and I think uh, I think Director Brown mentioned this already, so we do have a second, the deputy now in position, and I think we have the the resources that are much different than what we thought back when we were going through the BDO audit, so I I would agree with with that, but if there's something specialized that we need some help in or another set of eyes, certainly we can, we can discuss that at some point.
It seems to me you that uh, the new person whose name escapes me that we appointed to the to the uh, finance department, hired for the finance department, is a CPA, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, um, so if the C, if it was something the CFO did not want to undertake himself, certainly that person would be well qualified to sit on that committee. Okay, uh, Director Rain.
Yeah, just a a bit of a follow-up on that. I think the the forensic audit did say that we should be looking at internal audit, and I've still, I've been wrestling with that. Always do it over and over again.
Director Rain, I'm I'm having a lot of trouble, could you move your microphone clear and and speak in that direction, please?
Yeah, I I the 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 forensic audit did mention there should be an internal auditor. Well, kind of reporting to the audit committee, and I'm still a a little bit fuzzy on exactly what the role would be and how that works with external auditors and uh, maybe that's something that this new committee can wrestle with. Uh, the point I wanted to make is, um, I'm not sure the nature of the of the finance committee that is being proposed. In my experience with the finance committees is they spend a lot of time on budget planning and and allocation of funds, et cetera. And if the finance committee is going to be working with staff and in developing policies and direction on budgets, uh, before they're presented to the board or even to the audit committee. Uh, they will come to the finance committee ahead of going to the board. Then there may be a need to almost expand, and be certainly be be have a committee beyond five people, maybe seven people. Cause that 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 that's significant different direction. I know in, we have a finance committee in municipality, we spend a ton of time pre-budget thinking about where we're going, how big is the tax increase, how we're going to manage uh, those kinds of things. And I guess I'm throwing a question back, did you see the finance committee having a much more in-depth role in establishing budgets and and overseeing, uh, you know, the financial issues, the way we had the audit committee previously. And I raised that one time a long time ago with our former CIO. We should be doing much more in-depth work and was immediately shut down. And absolutely not, your only role is to hire the external auditors and oversee what they're doing. That's the way regional districts operate. We don't operate like companies and businesses where we have finance committees that actually get into budget issues and those kinds of things. Um, so I've been being new to the game, I shut my mouth and didn't say anything anymore, but I think if you do set up a finance committee. Uh, it that could be one of the most important committees that this board has. And probably should be, in my opinion, but I just wanted to throw out the question, cause if it's gonna do a whole bunch of work on the on setting budgets and and making recommendations to the board. Uh, then probably you might need seven people.
Thanks, Director Rain, and that and that's why we just, we just noted a minimum of five in in our review of other regional districts, finance committees. Um, that was like the the minimum, of course, they have, they're they're quite a bit smaller than our regional district. Um, so we, when we bring forward a draft terms of reference, um, we can, we can look at the the number of uh, members on the committee.
Is supplemental, if I make, just, but is the vision that the, this finance committee would be much more involved in uh, setting the budgets and reviewing budgets prior to those budgets coming to uh, the board?
That that's the vision, yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I heartily support that effort.
Thanks, Director Rain, and and just for my own edification, that um, expansion and scope, that was within your contemplation when you came up with these recommendations with respect to the
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, Director Roden.
Uh, thank you, just following on from the composition, I I I heartily like the idea of being a little less prescriptive, I mean, certainly have minimums, you know, must have at least two small or two EA directors must have at least, but right, but so like, I'm on the utility committee, I've learned a lot about water systems, and it's been really interesting. From that point of view, but as pointed out in the report, municipal directors, you know, it doesn't affect them. So I think being too prescriptive can make it difficult to find enough people to be on the committee, but you do need to have some language in there to ensure that you're not having a committee made up entirely of municipal directors. So just since it was already brought up by Director Quinn.
Good feedback.
Thank you, Director O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, having served on the City of Campbell's Finance Committee and being the chair for the last two years. Um, a lot of what we do is work on policy. And we spend a lot of time with our small committee, spending hours and hours trying to refine a policy that we then bring back to council, do the dirty work, bring it back to council, we think this is what it is, and then have a wholesome discussion. But that policy is really what is guiding the ship. And that's what the policy should be set for, and and the committee to be working on that uh, ensures uh, that these policies get the due time and attention that they deserve, uh, and also can be worked on and and changed as as the organization needs it. So I certainly support uh, going to finance committee, thank you.
Thanks, Director O'Reilly. Director Brown.
I I just want to um, say basically what Director O'Reilly had said. This is the difference between audit and operations, but operations does not does not say that it's going to be the finance committee that actually does the work. We are not going to be doing anything, we are overseers and we we're policy oriented, we we create policy, the staff do the work, we do not want to get into the work of the staff.
Thank you, is there anything further in terms of discussion respecting recommendation number one, Director Laird?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wouldn't there be a terms of reference come back? Um, once you sort of how the committee's kind of flow so that the the board can see exactly what the direction that and the responsibility of this financial committee be, cause right now it's kind of vague.
Oh, absolutely, and I was gonna touch on this later in the presentation, but our our plan, um, assuming we get support for our our recommendations. Will be to draft uh, terms of references for all of our um, committees that we we keep. And then for those that we will have a meeting with the associated committee, we would get some feedback and input from that committee first. But regardless, we'll bring one report with uh, all however many terms of reference um, attached to that. So that the board has an opportunity to review, and of course, the board needs to approve those terms of references. So there'll be a lot more detail provided.
Thank you, anything further? So all in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. That's what I was thinking, I wonder if we should post, maybe that barbecue could be put over till four o'clock.
Uh, and so before I jump into this one, just picking up on something Deanna said, uh, as as you see these recommendations going forward, they're all you know, vague in the sense of we just want the direction of of how to move forward with the committee. The details of the exact committee structure, all of that will get covered in terms of reference that is gonna come forward to the board. Um, in in one package, so at that point, and we're happy to take that feedback now, but there'll be opportunity to take feedback both from the the board as well as external members and uh, and then staff will have input on what the detailed structure of that committee is gonna look like. So just keep that in the back of your mind as we go through the the recommendations. All right, Economic Development and Recreation Committee. So there's been a number of uh, variations of Economic Development Committee in the TNRD going back as far as two thousand and five in terms of a formal committee structure. Uh, the the current iteration of this committee was established in twenty seventeen, the mandate was to provide advice and recommendations to the board and senior staff on strategic development of economic development, tourism, regional parks, and promotion enhancement of the motion picture and creative industries. Uh, membership is five EA directors, two municipal, small municipal, and one from the large municipality. So I I I guess the the big thing that we noticed um, here uh, was that the mandate of the committee is this broad regional economic development function. However, we don't actually have a regional economic development function, the TNRD, I know in the past, there has been different iterations of this. So any economic development and tourism work that we do, so to clarify, TNRD does have um, functions uh, of that specific to electoral areas, partnerships with municipalities, but we don't have a regional um, service for economic development or tourism. So because of that, there's been limited agenda items going back to twenty seventeen to deal with that regional service. Those other economic development functions, we'll talk about North Thompson, for example, are dealt with specifically by staff and in those um, communities. Um, and the the majority of the the agenda items going back in this review was specific to the Film Commission. So this committee is kind of evolved into be more specific to a film commission uh, update mechanism. Now, however, there's already a Film Commission Advisory Committee, and those recommendations can go and that information can go through, forward through the board, through that mechanism. Um, so what we found in looking at the other agenda items is that most of those agenda items would be more appropriate for either an electoral area directors meeting, because issues impact all EAs. Or the entire board through a committee, the whole recommendation, uh, sorry, through committee of the whole meeting. Uh, so as you'll see, if you skip ahead in the recommendations, one of the recommendations is to increase those meetings. Uh, and and have these type of issues go to either the committee of the whole or to electoral area directors meeting. So things like broadband connectivity, we brought that forward to an electoral area directors meeting just this spring. Um, I'm sorry, that was to a committee of the whole meeting this spring, because we know it impacts the entire region. Uh, regional parks function, that's uh, something that we don't currently have, but there is some regional parks and looking at other uh, regional districts, that's a topic that's discussed at their um, at at at, sorry, an electoral area wide or committee of the whole meetings, and this highway entrance sign, as you know, I presented to that at an electoral area directors meeting. So something we want to point out is that the newly, and and you'll see this theme repeated, the newly erected board through um, a new strategic planning session may decide that we want, for example, a regional tourism function or a regional economic development function. So if that happens, then we may want to revisit having a committee like this, but at this time, there's no real clear direction this committee should be doing. So examples of those committees that could come out of a new uh, uh, a board direction would be economic development, tourism, arts and culture, regional parks. Uh, so in, as I mentioned, the Columbia Shushwap, they actually have a a regional park, regional parks committee specific to their regional park service that covers the entire regional district. So for those reasons, we're recommending this committee be dissolved and allowing the newly elected board to determine through their strategic priorities establishing in twenty twenty-three, um, which may or may not include regional economic development function.
Thank you, Director Christian.
Yeah, I'd like to move that recommendation, if there's a secondary, I'd like to speak with it.
Is there any further discussion, uh, Director Rice? Sorry, uh, let her, let Director Chris speak to it, please, and then Director Rice.
Thank you, you know, when I looked at this over, it 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 strikes me that there has always been a bit of duplication between venture cammups and and uh, their role as a regional economic arm, because clearly now the kinds of things they're dealing with are not camel centric, they're more regional, and uh, the same with tourism cammups and in particular, the relationship between the ski industry and the golf industry, which is a a regional operation. And and I think that uh, by allowing the new board the opportunity just to kind of look at the specific pieces that they want. Uh, be those largely in the regional parks piece, uh, or in some uh, regional uh, cultural and his uh, historical kinds of uh, activities, I think that would be the best way to go, so I I think this should be work in progress.
Thank you, uh, Director Rice.
Uh, thank you, Chair, yeah, as uh, this the one I was struggling a little bit with, and uh, my feelings are, um, I'm okay with waiting for the new board. But that said, uh, our small municipalities, they have economic development plans, they have tourism on their agenda once in a while at their meetings and stuff, especially the small municipalities. The electoral areas don't have any of that, we don't have a vehicle to sort of address that, and and it's key for uh, the economic vibrancy of these rural communities, the smaller ones, is to have some vehicle for tourism, some vehicle for economic development. And some vehicle to get that work done, so I think the new board, that's a good conversation to have, what, in what form that would be, I don't know. But I think we need to have that vehicle in place at some time, otherwise the electoral areas are still struggling through. Um, you know, the community DMOs like Gold Country is a vehicle, but uh, you know, it's it's not the uh, complete um, book that we need in order to address these things, so I will support this, because I think the new board can look at it and and sort of make a decision. If if there's something we can do here at this board, or there's some other vehicle to make it happen. Thanks.
Director O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you you know, what's what's presented in front of us, uh, to You know, what's what's presented in front of us today makes a lot of sense, looking what's on paper. Um certainly, I'm not an economist, uh but I spend a lot of time every day following the markets, global markets, uh financial markets. And I strongly believe we're at the beginning of a monetary crisis. Uh I believe uh things are going to shift greatly and we're just at the beginning of that. Um and you know, when you hear comments from the Federal Reserve saying that they're willing to inflict as much pain as possible to get inflation under control. Uh you know, and Canada usually follows suit. Um I I think this change is coming. Uh and. While I understand the intent of of having, you know. New things happen in twenty three with the new board. I think by um getting rid of this committee today, we're actually going to be setting up the next board. Um not for the most success possible because they're going to be uh one or two steps behind. Uh by not having this committee already in place. Um and I mean, the the scope and is going to change what they do, but I think it should stay to be ready for the next board. And and then handle it from there. And so I I won't be supporting the recommendation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Blackwell, Kershaw, and Rothenberger. Director Blackwell.
Yeah, I'll be supporting the recommendation. Um I don't see the T N R D is having a cohesive um. Economic development role. A lot of the other things covered under this. Uh committee um are basically staff function um and responsibility of staff. Um I I see the board has more of a role um in. The discussion about what we're talking about here as advocacy. Um. You know, things like. The evolution of Toda from Thompson Okanagan to a Thompson Nicola, two separate tourism associations. Um I think that should be a goal for the future because. The Thompson part of the Toda has been relatively ignored versus the Okanagan. Um unless, of course, you know, you've got a winery in Caloosa, you can show vines next to a lake. Um so, yeah, I I I really, I really think with all the work and all the the duties that the T N R D has, especially the board. Maybe we should let this one go until we figure out what the reality or what the new direction of it is.
Thank you, Director Kershaw.
Thank you. Yes, I support. Doing away with this, but I think we have to bring it back because Lauren Arconson Tourism and the different tourism groups. I think are better handled if expanded the duties of the uh. Uh rural directors rather than as a board because. When I was on the board years ago, we used to have tourism that was tried to be. Conducted as a board and it never worked out because everybody was worried about. The. Somebody spending too much time on camel to run too much time on merit or too much time on this place. When we can look after that too uh as rural directors. Working in conjunction with the board. So I'm totally in favor of. Uh to be in this board.
Thank you, Director Rothenberger.
Um I won't support it. Just a reminder that Venture Camels doesn't. Speak for the interests of rural areas. It it speaks for the interest of cameras. Um and we all know the history of Venture Camels, how that divorce took place many years ago. And the T N R D hasn't really had any. Voice in economic development since then, except through its economic development committee. And I I think that's still a place where ideas can be brought together. It's a good place for brainstorming about economic opportunities and possibilities. And so I I think we need to maintain it. And as was pointed out yesterday. We can't keep saying that we'll leave it to the next board. Um we're in office here to make decisions. Uh to progress and move forward and get things done. And um. You know, it's it's uh it's not good policy, I don't think, to. Start saying that. Let's just leave it for the next people who come along to worry about. I mean, it's in place now. Let let's keep it going. And as Director O'Reilly O'Reilly says, it will be set up uh and ready to go for the new board.
Thank you, uh Director Brown.
I think um. From my perspective, I don't know what we've done on Economic Development Committee this year. I haven't seen anything come out of it that. Um. That I can even think of. I don't want to get rid of it altogether. But I like the idea of putting it either with electoral areas directors or with um committee of the whole. I think each municipality has their own. Um. Economic development, tourism, ideas and. Um. I would just like to see it. Dissolved, but not forgotten. Um either. Many of the whole or electoral areas.
Thank you, uh Director Rice as a supplemental and then Director Roden.
Thank you, Chair, for this supplemental. Yeah, I was listening to the conversation and. And I think I I too um. I'm gonna sort of change my position of, I'm not gonna support this. I think we should leave it in place and comes to mind, listen to Director O'Reilly and uh Rothenberger that. If it's in place and we're on board with a new board coming on, whoever they may be. I think the composition needs to be changed on this committee, and that's something that can be addressed if the committee is still there. And we can have that conversation from the get go if the committee is still in place. So I'm sort of uh of the position, yeah, let's keep it. Let's look at the composition. I think it does need to change and and maybe the scope needs to change a little bit, so I will not be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Roden.
Thank you. As Chair of the this particular committee, I would be happy to see it go. Not because I don't like chairing the committee, but because in the last two years, all we have discussed are signage in entering and leaving the T N R D. And Film Commission Report, which was then presented to the entire board anyway. Um I understand what people are saying about having some framework for the new. Board uh to come in and decide to make of this what they will. I just think a cleaner, easier, less, least messy way to do it. Is to get rid of this altogether and let the new board create what they want, whether it's economic development, whether it's tourism, whether it's parks and trails. Rather than try to take something that already exists and. Rearrange it. Leave it for them to decide what their priorities are. Um and if it turns out that it's going to be electoral area directors who want to talk about an economic development strategy to affect those areas. Then. Wouldn't that be best at an E A directors committee meeting rather than the rest of the board? I think every municipal director here has an economic development and tourism strategy. And much as we all love the T N R D, there is a certain amount of turf protecting. Going on there. I think it would be best left to the E A directors to decide if that's what they want and discuss it at their committee meetings.
Thank you, Director Laird.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been on the uh committee for the last. Uh three years. And I intend to agree with Director Roden. When you look at Economic Development Recreation Committee. Um. There are two different items. You're either going to do economic development and discuss that. Um and I do agree that should be E A or directors because municipalities usually have that in place for economic development. I think it needs to be relooked at. And decide exactly what we want. As far as economic development or recreation or whatever we've been discussing. And I think we have to ask staff to look and see what the recommendation would be as to how this could possibly work. Um. For the uh give direction for a new board to have a look at it. A lot will depend on how our strategic priorities roll out. And uh we don't have a staff person right now that's totally directed towards economic development. Or recreation, it's sort of a blend. We don't have. An individual that would actually work. With uh economic development plans, we A directors, it's sort of uh. Up in the air. So I'll I'll be supporting to have this removed in a a. A re. New direction on what we want to see for the the different topics that we discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, uh. Director Schaefer.
I'd just like to say that I agree with Director uh Brown that it should go to the E A directors to keep it in place. And not dissolve it right now. I just, let's move it. And up in Clearwater, our tourism is um tourism laws great, and it covers my whole area and it covers Clearwater, which is. So really, we don't need tourism. My area.
Thank you. Um Director Laird, your microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Um. Yeah, I I want the record to show that I I I see no further. Uh hands up. So I I would like the record to show that I'm agreeing with Director Brown. Uh. I think that uh what she said was it should be gone. But not forgotten. I certainly wouldn't want to see it forgotten. And uh I'm sure that it'll come forward. Uh very early in the in the mandate of the new boards, so I will be uh supporting the. Uh recommendation. That being said, uh uh all in favor? Those opposed? Uh one, two, three, four. Five, six. Opposed?
Sorry, Trigulis, can we just, just for the recording secretary's benefit, could we have the names, please? So we have Director Rothenberger, Watson, O'Reilly. Holderman.
Rice.
Rice, I can't.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, thank you.
The uh recommendation is carried.
Thank you, Chair. Um number three. Uh Emergency Management and Protective Services Committee. Uh so the history here is first established in two thousand and one. Uh current committee established in two thousand and eight with some minor updates in twenty thirteen. So uh it's mandated is provide recommendations and advice to the board of directors and senior staff for strategic operations and development emergency management program. And related services, programs, and initiatives. Membership is for electoral area directors, three municipal, small municipal, and one from large municipality. Um now, when we actually look through the, again, we did a full review of of what has actually been. Going to this committee and the work this committee was actually doing. Um was primarily vetting the search and rescue grant program that we first bring to this committee. And then that recommendation goes forward to the board. Um essentially, it is a a rubber stamping of of grant and aid that we provide to those um. Search and rescue groups. Um also, the the main uh. Agenda items on this committee has been updates from external delegations like B C Wildfire River Forecast Center, as well as updates from staff on the emergency program. So there hasn't been any recent recommendations other than those search and rescue grants. Um. Uh. Recommendations, I guess, that went forward to the board. Uh now, what? What we want to point out here is that um especially this past year, what we found is we would give an update. Um from both external agencies as well as staff on our emergency program. And then we would go back to either the board or the committee, the whole, with those same delegations to give the information again. So again, that information is very important for the board to be aware of, and we we plan to continue that. Um but we think those delegations are more appropriate to just go directly to a committee, the whole, or an electoral area directors meeting, depending on 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 who they impact. Now, the other piece of the title here is protective services. Um now, looking back on the agendas, we haven't had any. Protective services items on the agenda for for quite a long time. Um. And anything to do with our our fire departments is more appropriately handled at an electoral area directors committee meeting. Because the electoral areas are the only ones with T N R D administered fire departments. So, for example, just recently, we brought forward a recommendation for the new fire training officer and fire smart coordinator position. To an electoral area directors committee meeting because the proposal was that that be funded both from the electoral area administration fund. And the budgets of those existing fire departments. Uh that's why we chose not to bring it to this emergency management committee because we wanted the appropriate people there at the table making the recommendation. Now, a- as an aside, what we want to point out to this is we are expecting, or the provinces, I just, last week, actually given an update about the Emergency Program Act that. Updates to the Emergency Program Act that are in progress, we're expecting that to come in spring twenty twenty three. So that, although the recommendation is to dissolve this committee, depending on what that Emergency Program Act looks like. Um we may find ourselves in a position as regional districts that our um responsibilities have increased our man, our our. In in terms of emergency management and that may require new committee, new form of getting input. But at this point, we're again recommending the Mercy Management Committee be dissolved. And that the delegations and recommendations that previously went to this committee now be brought to the committee of the whole or electoral area directors committee meeting.
Move the recommendation.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'm seeing none, therefore.
Quick, call the question.
I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any? Director Rothenberger opposed? Then the recommendation. Carried.
All right, moving on to Electoral Area Directors Committee. So that um has been meeting as an informal group um back since nineteen ninety nine. Uh. However, in two thousand and one, we cleaned it up from a legislative point of view because it was um. Not formally established as a standing committee, so that was done just uh last year. The membership consists of all ten electoral areas. Uh so the vice are the mandate is to provide advice and recommendations to the board and senior staff concerning services and delivery matters referred to. The committee by the board, matters related to electoral areas, and make recommendations to the board to advocate other levels of government regarding issues importance to electoral areas. So we think that there, this is a very effective. Mechanism to deal with issues that come to the board that impact electoral areas only. Um. So what our recommendation is, is to increase the frequency of these meetings. And so we can more appropriately bring more issues to this committee. So again, we're not proposing any less work be done. We're going to put more work on this committee that propose that previously has been on these small committees.
Moved, seconded. Is there any discussion? Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long time to see that we finally get recognized as E A directors. However, I want to suggest to you. Over the many years that I've attended conferences, et cetera, and talked to rural directors across this province. There's a fine line between the rural directors. Taking on a lot of responsibility that the municipalities would like to have at least. A say in. So I'm I'm certainly. Happy to see this happening, but let's not leave our municipalities out, especially the ones that we surround. Like my area totally surrounds Logan Lake. I have a partnership with Logan Lake. And those are the things that need discussing at some place, maybe as. Uh committee, the whole meeting or whatever.
Thank you, Director Rice.
Yeah, and to follow up on Director Elliott's thoughts and and stuff, and I think moving into this and stuff, we need to, in our area down here where we're at, we need to. Look at a C to C, which they have up north and uh and and that that is inclusive, and it not only gets the municipalities involved, it gets the indigenous community involved. It gets, you know, the railroads involved and the stuff going on in your area, and I think that's a value added tutal tool for an area that. Been struggling to try to put together for quite some time as electoral area director. So. I just wanted to add on to what Director Elliott said that to get the municipalities involved also, let's not leave them out and our indigenous communities.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? See none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? That one's carried.
Back to Deanna.
So our policy review committee, um it was originally created in two thousand and three, just as an ad hoc uh committee to review the T N R D's policy manual. In two thousand and seven, the scope was expanded um and the committee continued to meet up until twenty eighteen. Um when the last review and update of the T N R D's policy manual took place. And the committee was reinstated in twenty twenty one with a similar mandate as it had in the past. Um. In addition to uh being mandated with recommending new policies and expanding the number of members on the committee. So from a staff perspective, we found this committee to be a really effective and useful mechanism for seeking input into new and amended policies. Um and bringing uh getting advice and recommendations um on policy matters. However, once the policy review is complete, this will uh limit or eliminate um a number of agenda items. And in our review of other local governments committees, we found that a number of governments are moving towards. The creation of governance and ethics um committees, which is really interesting and timely for us because. Um a number of the recommendations coming out of the B D O forensic audit um are sort of in the area of of governance and. And ethics. And so staff felt this might be a really good opportunity to expand the role and the scope. Um of the policy review committee to include um governance and ethics. There are a a few, I'd say two or three. Um either governments and governance and ethics committees or governance and policy um committees among other local governments. So we do have. Um, either governments and governance and ethics committees or governance and policy um committees among other local governments, so we do have. Examples out there about with regards to the types of things that go to these committees and sort of how that would function. So some examples that we've looked at here and again, we would um, we would bring this forward to the existing policy review committee for their feedback, if there's support for this. But a revised mandate um could include things like the committee providing advice and recommendations on methods to increase public transparency and accountability. At something that we're, we continue to work on. Um, efforts to increase and maintain public trust and confidence, definitely something we continue to work on. Looking at initiatives to strengthen um intergovernmental relations, in particular with our First Nations. Um, and initiatives, looking at initiatives that might enhance the performance and effectiveness of the board um and governance issues involving the board. So our recommendations that the policy review committee be restructured as a policy review and governance committee.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion, Director Quinn?
Thank you, I like the idea of the ethics, does that include as part of governance or should there be a separate uh? You should read something like uh, policy review. And ethics and governments committee, should it read that or does it fit in under the governance part?
Yeah, through through the chaired Director Quinn, so we we were, we would propose including ethics within the mandate, the updated terms of reference of the committee. We just thought it might be a bit wordy if we included ethics in the title.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Is anyone opposed? That one's carried.
Alright, moving on to the Thompson Nicola invasive plant management committee. Uh, so as many of you aware, this was uh fairly recently created um in twenty eighteen. Um, it replaced the functions of two existing committees, one external uh nonprofit committee that operated within the boundaries of the T N R D. As well as the T N R D had its own invasive plant management committee, which had a limited scope of only providing um. Input to the T N R D administered invasive plant program. Uh, so this new committee is, scope is broader, that it's, the intent is to encourage multi-party collaboration on invasive plant management. So really, regional coordination is the role of this committee. Uh, so it is a very unique committee in the sense that it has representation from T N R D elected officials. But as well as a number of operate operational staff from different land management agencies, and that's all built into the terms of reference. Uh, so it does function well, and there was actually a lot of time and effort put into developing the terms of reference. So our recommendation is actually not to significantly change the terms of reference. Uh, the only recommendation is that it be um amended to be an advisory committee. And the reason for that recommendation is simply back to Deanna's introduction on legislative side. That it's currently a standing committee, standing committee members need to be appointed by the chair. Whereas the way this committee operates and we recommend that it should continue to operate is that each agency with a seat on the table on that committee. Decides who they want to sit and represent opposed to the chair appointing those.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Sorry, Director Blackwell.
Yeah, I love this idea. Um, I see so many outside inputs coming into a committee like this. Um, and us deciding who sits on it is not a smart idea. Um, if anything, the one thing I'd love to do is throw money at this one because it's always underfunded as as a board. Um, we, Clearwater has the uh, an area has the forestry working group that works basically on the same model and it's a wonderfully. Effective way of doing business, so, thank you.
And uh, I just have a question, uh, Mr. Viera, because it seems to me that that's essentially the way it's operating now in terms of who's appointed to the uh. To the committee by these external parties and M O T I appoints their own people, force uh appoints their own people. Um. So essentially, we're just formalizing what's already happening, aren't we?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, if any? That one's carried, we're marching right along. Uh, yeah. Uh, okay, that takes us to.
Alright. Yes, Regional Solid Waste is another one near and dear to my heart, so um. Originally established and in two thousand and seven, and that was uh when we went through our first major update to our solid waste management plan. And it was restructured as a standing committee in two thousand and thirteen. The purpose of the committee is to provide recommendation and by and advice for strategic operations and development of waste management services. Membership is five electoral area directors, three directors from small municipalities and one from large municipality. And we're not proposing any changes to this committee. Any questions or discussion on that?
Director Watson?
Can you refresh my mind on why Kamloops City has a director on this? When they are not involved in our solid waste management plan?
Yes, uh, that's actually a really good question, so there's a a couple reasons. Uh, so the city of Kamloops is the only area that doesn't pay into the service um through taxation. However, we do have an operating agreement where they do contribute funding uh for um the services that directly benefit city of Kamloops residents. But the primary reason that I would suggest they continue to have a a an opportunity to sit on this committee. Is that um our operations, even though funded separately from an operations point of view. Um, under our solid waste management plan. Um, which we're required to have through the province, the city of Kamloops is included in that from a, so from a planning perspective. The city of Kamloops operates within the regional solid waste management plan, just from an operational perspective, they operate separately. Uh, so at this committee, a lot of the topics, sometimes we deal with operational things at this committee, but often it's. Uh, again, around the strategic direction and and in development and implementation of our solid waste management plan. Which would include the city of Kamloops, so they're often actually providing updates at this meeting of what they're doing that helps us. As a entire regional district, including them, achieve the goals of our plan, so most recently. City Kamloops gave an update on the implementation of their curbside organics program. Which organics diversion is a priority of the T N R D's regional solid waste management plan.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Director Brown?
Um, there is no motion.
No, there was no motion, it's just an opportunity if there was any questions, no, no motion on this one, no recommendation.
So there's no vote required in any case. Thanks, Mr. Viera.
Hey, Utilities Committee, uh, originally established in two thousand and seven as well. Um, evolved to a standing committee in twenty thirteen, its role is to provide advice for strategic operations and development of the utility services. Currently, memberships five electoral area directors, two small municipal municipalities and two from large municipalities. Um, and as was already pointed on the meeting, uh, member municipalities do not have any T N R D owned and operated systems. Um, so we feel it's more appropriate for the membership be that E A directors that have utility systems within their electoral area. So the recommendation is the committee be maintained, but the terms of reference be amended to only include the A directors.
Move, move acceptance.
Yeah, so let's move in seconded, uh, is there any discussion? Director Polderman and Director Rothenberger.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um. I've, I sat on the utility commission and I found it very. Informative as, you know, small municipalities don't do a whole lot of infrastructure upgrades and. Looking at the T N R D's, um, you know, projects was very helpful when it came to. Um. Uh, determining the course of action to take in the municipality. So while I understand that, you know, the financial implications are that of the E A directors. I would still um. Hope that municipalities can sit in and view the. Wh- what is going on with utilities. That are uh being, um, how do you say that, run by the T N R D.
Thank you, uh, did you wish to comment on that, uh, Mr. Viera, or it strikes me, oh, I'm sorry, I. Uh, Jake, did you have something to say on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that um, the, the way this, the utilities committee is structured right now. It's, it certainly has always seemed a bit odd that there are E A directors out there who have multiple utilities. Uh, that are a key part of our utilities program that aren't, weren't participating in that committee, so. It it certainly made sense from our perspective to have. Any E A director that has a wastewater or water utility uh owned by the T N R D to sit on that committee. Um, the participation, whether formal or informal from the member municipalities, is certainly welcome and at the board's discretion, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, just to add to that as a point of clarification, um, uh, and it, all directors are are welcome to attend all committee meetings. Uh, as per procedure by law without having them as committee members.
Yes, that's great, thank you, Director Rothenberger.
Thanks, Chair, I think this is probably the, the best of the fifteen recommendations. I fully support, um. Not to complain, but for the past couple of years, I I haven't succeeded in being appointed to the utilities commission, uh, committee. Despite the fact that area P has, I'm pretty sure, more utilities than any other part of the regional district. And and it creates two problems, uh, yes, uh, attendance is one thing, but uh to participate in the discussion and. And recommendations that go forward to the board is extremely important. And uh. It uh, it it presents a, w- without being rep. Uh, participating in that committee presents a problem for the director, but I think it also presents a problem for the board. In what might come out of a committee. Uh, that um. That is uh. That consists of people who are not directly involved, uh, just give you an example. Uh, the the recent recommendation from the utilities committee that uh came forward on small water systems. Uh, s- sounded good on paper, I'm sure. But in practice would have been a total disaster if we had implemented that or or had it, uh, had succeeded in getting. That uh policy changed at a provincial level. And and I'm talking about expanding the tax base for uh utility systems out beyond those who benefit. Uh, from it. Um, and and I suspect that that recommendation might have come forward from a committee where a number of members have nothing to do with utilities and aren't familiar with the environment. In which we work as electoral area directors almost each and every day and the sensitivity of it and the major expenditures that are involved in it. Uh, so I think this is uh an excellent, uh, an excellent recommendation.
Thank you, is there any further to Scott, Director Rice?
Yeah, and I echo uh, uh, Director Rothenberger's sent sentiments and. And certainly have Mr. Devlin's sent sentiments, I think if you're having a utility in your area and you're a director, it not only goes to. Um, good governance, it goes to good uh communication with your constituency and stuff. As the eco depot is unfolding in in area I, um, I'm already getting a lot of questions about it, I don't sit on that committee, so uh. Um, you know, I have to do a little more homework and stuff, which is fine. I've attended the waste management meetings and stuff on my own dime and that's fine too. But I think it makes a lot of sense that we can answer our constituents' questions, at the end of the day. That's who we represent, that's who we're employed by, and we need to have those answers, and if we're on those committees. We can have those answers a little more readily, a little more easily, and then bring our constituencies' concerns as it unfolds back. To the next meeting and say, hey, hey, this is what I'm hearing, especially on taxpayer-funded stuff. Uh, you know, the 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 big uh capital projects like an eco depot or a water system and stuff like that, I think it's really important. For the board and our constituents, thank you.
Director Brown?
Does this utilities? Um, committee also include eco depots?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Director Ro- Director Polderman is opposed. Hey, Mr. Viera?
Okay, moving on, uh, the next three committees are um. To deal with uh the committee specific to the North Thompson, so I might spend a little bit more time explaining some of the background on it. Because maybe some on the board aren't as as familiar with these committees. So, the Thompson Headwaters Committee, it was established in two thousand and eight when the T N R D took over the water system parks and cemeteries. Uh, in electoral area B. Uh, now, the committee is established through a bylaw and the bylaw gives it responsibilities for day-to-day operations. Through the services coordinators, through, so Sherry Madden, our staff person up there. Um, as well as they provide the the budget vice, the membership consists of three community members from Ebola. Four community members from Blue River and the area director and the area directors alternate. So after, um, we spent a lot of time looking into this. Um, so after looking into the establishment bylaw. It, as I mentioned, it gives day-to-day operational responsibilities to the committee. Um, and now, the the those day-to-day respond, operation responsibilities, as you know, are typically the responsibilities of staff. So that was kind of the first challenge we noted here, so in. In function, the the challenge is it it can and does create expectations. That staff take directions and are accountable directly to this committee. Um, whereas really staff are accountable through the direction of the board, not the direction of the committee. Uh, now, the other issue from a legislative side is that this committee has, even though the bylaw gives, says it has authority for decision-making and setting budgets. The board has not specifically given it that authority through a delegation bylaw. So it doesn't have the authority from the board that it's currently exercising. In uh, in practice. Uh, could that be done? Um, technically, yes, but that wouldn't be a recommendation of staff. Um, for the reason that just, you know, discussed is that operational responsibilities typically are and should be delegated to staff, not to to committees. Uh, the other thing I want to highlight is that. This operation of this committee is different than how services are delivered in our other eight electoral areas. Uh, I say eight because we'll, we'll discuss uh electoral area B in a moment. Uh, but services in electoral areas operationally are handled by staff. Um, there's regular communication with electoral area directors and any formal policy decisions that need to go forward, either go up through a committee electoral area directors committee. To the board or can go directly to the board, for example, contract award uh for a a construction of a park. Um, in electoral area M and N would be going to the board for that adoption, not through a committee like this. Now. Uh, you know, those are the the challenges we'd identify, now, a a very important function of this committee, which. Um, uh, we want to make sure it gets maintained and this committee is effective with is. Uh, public consultation and input, so uh, this committee operates as a mechanism for those members of that committee to give direct public input and feedback. To the projects, so we want to maintain that, but this little photo here is a. A peek inside the brain of Deanna and Jake and I, as we work through all the different mechanisms of how. How we can still maintain this and 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 what we're recommending in our opinion is is do the public consultation and input. Better, including a broader um scope of the the residents in that area. So if that doesn't make sense, then hopefully these next slides do. And so our, for those alternative model to those committees, so we are recommending to dissolve the Thompson Headwaters Committee and replace it with a. The the recommendation is replaced with a broad public consultation and input process. Um, so what I'll cover here is what, how we see that working out, so it's essentially a two, two-stage process. One of them being a electoral area-wide general public meeting slash public input period, twice a year. So the idea is that one would happen in September where we go community-wide to seek input on. Both, you know, input on operations, what's working, what's not, as well as feedback on what are your priorities for next year? What types of projects that people are interested in, now, these meetings would be attended and hosted by staff and obviously. Uh, um, uh, great uh involvement of the area director as well. Take that information back, and the reason it's September is then we could develop it into the provisional budget. Working through the process, provisional budget comes to the board. Prior to final budget going to the board, we are legislatively, as the regional district required, to go back out and do public consultation on our budget. So the February meeting would be part of this public consultation period where we would go back to these communities. And and say, this is, so we heard you in September, here's what we worked into the budget, here's what it looks like, and this is an opportunity they could provide feedback. That would and ultimately go up through to the board prior to a board adopting a final budget in March. Separate from that process is um this idea of working groups, now, Deanna touched on that in her introduction. There are some functions uh specific to electoral areas A and as well as, sorry, areas, this one's for area B. As well as electoral area A that we think are better served by a stakeholder working group. So, an example here is um Sherry who's here today, um, part of her role is uh tourism marketing. So, an example here is, um, Sheri, who's here today, um, part of her role is, uh, tourism marketing for Electoral Area B. Currently, you know, that work, um, that she runs through committee, for example, you know, designing, uh, input on. On a, on a brochure or an advertising campaign is going to this committee. What we're proposing here is that a separate working group be created that would be specific to tourism marketing. That stakeholders who have an interest in tourism marketing, so tour operators, businesses, they're all welcome to participate in that working group. So we have the right people around the table doing this work, and they're providing input directly to staff into what they see. Um, that would directly impact their business and their work. Um, now, these still would be defined, have a defined terms of reference that anyone participating in these stakeholder working groups. Would have to agree to in terms of following the process. However, it wouldn't be delegated authority from the board or established committee of the board would be a working group created administered by staff. So the re- recommendation again is 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 more vague that we're not getting into details. Uh, but it's that the committee be dissolved and replaced with a broad community consultation and stakeholder input and engagement process.
Is anybody going to move the recommendation? Moved, moved and seconded. Discussion, uh, Director Watson, Director Quinn and Director Elliott.
Oh, thank you, Jamie. You're leaving me with North Thompson envy. Wow, uh, public meetings twice a year. Um. Why aren't we doing this all throughout the, um, region, not just in North Thompson?
Uh, so fair question, uh, to, uh. I I guess the, this recommendation is not that we won't do it other places. I I think this model, if the board adopts it, if we go this way. Um, can work in other electoral areas as well. I I think the question would be. How many electoral area-specific services there are and how, what we need input in, and based on that would determine. The level of of of, you know, the the community meeting and frequency of it. Uh, but not opposed to this model being expanded across other electoral areas.
Director Quinn.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I had intended to bring this issue to the board just after being elected. Um, and then COVID came along and kind of threw a wrench into everything. Um, the system that we put in place has has served reasonably well, but it is causing a lot of difficulty in. Those clauses where the committee. The attempts to allocate money and then, and then, uh, try to direct the staff member how to spend it. And it it's caused a lot of angst, it's caused a lot of, um, a lot of, uh. Wasted time on the committee and wasted time of the services coordinator. And and my preference would be, just as it's laid out, to have, uh, a couple of big community meetings. I think we've got one in September to begin this process where we could, we can ask them, and then. Uh, the Trails Working Group was a good idea. That's a board thing for that specific purpose. And there's a number of other things that I can see that for parks and that in the area. And for tourist promotion, we do our own tourist promotion and pay for it. Uh, it's a substantial amount of money, um, and it's operating very well there, so there's a coordinator. But it it's difficult to have the public trying to direct the, the service coordinator on how to do stuff. And and as I say, it's caused, and we've had talked to people and talked to staff. And we think this is probably a better way of doing it, and so that's why I would support it and urge all of you to support it. Um, all of this is funded by Area B, not the area, not the regional district as a whole. And I I think it would might be a better model for the future. And and I'll just leave it at that and, uh, and I'll publicly thank Ms. Madden for doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Quinn. Uh, Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Vera, what, um. Kind of money are we talking about with these committees? And are they well attended? Are the committee meetings well attended?
Uh, yeah, the committee meetings are well attended. Um, the committees, the meetings happen, uh, there. By the bylaw, they happen up to twelve times per year. However, it's at the discretion of the Electoral Area Director to cancel them, so in in reality, they're eight to ten meetings per year. Depending on need, um, and from a budget point of view, they are funded from those electoral area-specific service budgets.
And so they're authorized to spend that budget as they see fit?
Uh, oh, sir, I thought you were talking about the cost of the meeting, uh.
No.
No, the, the, the way, this is the challenge, the way the, the, the bylaw, uh, that establishes a committee. It 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 gives the committee ability to approve budgets that go to the board. So ultimately, it still gets approved by the board, or the detailed budgets do go to the committees for discussion.
Okay, so I guess I've just been sleeping. We've been talking about Wells Gray budgets.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Campbell. Did you wish to weigh in on this?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Vera said in response to Director Watson's, um, comments. When we were, um, doing that graphic that you saw, we we did consider that this might be something that would work well in other electoral areas. So we're kind of looking at this as sort of like a pilot. Um, and then in addition to that, it's important to note that the budget consultation process is a legislative requirement. And something that this board has has talked about before in terms of improving that process and getting out. And doing more, uh, consultation in all of our, um, electoral areas, so that's something that, um, the new, uh, deputy. Chief Financial Officer will be working with our current, um, Chief Financial Officer on, uh, coming up with a plan for that for next year.
Thank you, and as I recall, um. Those, uh, that budget consultation process. The snag we ran into was mainly how, so I'm glad to hear we're going to be working on that. Uh, Director Laird.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we do have a representative, uh, his name's Joe Kang. Uh, areas E, M, and N J has, uh, basically paid for his new position. And it's basically given us the opportunity to do exactly what Director Watson was wanting. Uh, we have had, uh, meetings in Lower Nicklaus around the park expansion. With Joe Kang as as well as, uh, Jamie cutting down to the meeting, and that's exactly what we have in place now. And, uh, Director Watson is already paying for that position. She just has to take advantage of it. Thank you.
To, uh, Director Quinn.
Mr. Chairman, I, in this process of of the community meetings twice a year. Uh, it would be appropriate, I think, to request that, uh, along with Ms. Madden. Uh, or the Services Coordinator, a senior staff member come as well to help, help, uh, help us. And I I would like to see that ha- happen as we go along.
Thank you. Hello. Is there anything further?
Is that better?
Opposed, if any? That was carried.
Okay, so moving on to the Wells Gray Country's, Country Services Committee, this is a, a, a very similar committee to the one we just discussed. Um, so this is for Electoral Area A. Um, so it was first established in two thousand and three. Its mandate was a little more specific to manage the sportsplex, street lighting, TV rebroadcasting. And tourism development and marketing. Now, keep in mind, this was established at the time prior to any municipalities existing anywhere north of Kamloops. In the TNRD. So, um, the mandate changed in two thousand and nine, uh, when, uh, Clearwater, uh, incorporated. Or sorry, it was updated in two thousand and nine, um, after incorporation. Um, so the new mandate of the the sportsplex and transit was removed because that was taken over by the District of Clearwater. Um, so the current bylaw, again, uh, notes overseeing day-to-day operations through the TNRD Services Coordinator. Committee membership is five community members as well as the director for the area and their alternate director. So, uh, again, in in many functions is very similar to the Thompson Headwaters Committee. Uh, so the challenge that we're noting is that we get it, given it day-to-day, the bylaw gives day-to-day operational authority to the committee. However, that authority has not been properly delegated by the TNRD Board. Um, so the same challenges exist that we've noted with the Thompson Headwaters Committee. Uh, whereas, um, we, if we're in a scenario where the the committee has, and it's. The risk is, uh. Um, misunderstanding in terms of the, uh, authority to direct staff and and these off. And and getting into operational details that really should just be left with staff and decisions of the board. Um. And once again, this is not how services are delivered in other electoral areas that we have a special committee, uh, we, um. That's maintained with staff. So proposed model doing, moving forward is exact same model as we proposed for the. Thompson Headwaters area was this idea of two general public meetings, and I I say public meetings because, yes, there will be in-person meetings. But it'd also be a public input period where we would have online mechanisms to provide feedback, both in that September window. And the February window. As well as create working groups that have community members that have a specific vested interest in that service. So the example I use here is, uh, perhaps we create a working group specific for community parks and recreation. Because we have a lot of community parks and, uh, and facilities that, uh, are the operational responsibility of of Sheri or staff up there. Um, and that would be a better mechanism to get that input and feedback. Uh, so the recommendation is, uh, very similar, that the committee be dissolved and replaced with broad community consultation and stakeholder input. And engagement process.
There's a recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
I'll second it for discussion.
Moved and seconded. And Discussion Director Schaefer.
Um, I completely disagree with this recommendation line for the following reasons. Wells Gray Country Service Committee is comprised of five members. From Area A, the Director and the Alternate Director. Each member of the community is chosen from the five hamlets within Area A. These people are chosen because they are of their voluntary involvement within the communities. Birch Island, the residents created the society so that they can apply for funding, for example, Halloween yearly suppers. And I asked them to create that, so they could do that. Mitch Miller is on the society and helps maintain the park. She has the pulse on the community and it's a grace, great asset. Upper Clearwater, Robert Vesak is a new member of the community and is involved in his area with Hall and the Fire Brigade. Because Upper Clearwater does not have any local services under the TNRD, he is my eyes and ears. Blackpool, Mike Savage is the Fire Chief of Blackpool Fire Department and also involved in highway rescue. Because of involvement, his involvement in the community, we are kept up to date on current issues. East Blackpool, there is another handler that does not have any local services. Bill Lucky represents the residents and is always available to discuss and participate in meeting, in meetings concerning issues in his area. Theyvenby Charlotte Cedarholm is a new member that has been involved in the community for many years as secretary for Vadenby Fire Department. Vadenby Water System before it became under the Regional District. And the Legion and Member of the Vadenby Trails and Recreation Society, which organizes community events. Alternate Director Hazel Waterley owns land in Area A but lives in Clearwater and is very involved in the community. She is a wealth of knowledge, she brings a wealth of knowledge to the table because she has lived it, lived in the community since birth. The committee has responsibilities other make, other than making recommendations. They are also appointed to local committees such as the Community Forest, Tourism Wells Gray, Forest, Forestry Initial. Initiatives, Working Group, Joint Services, et cetera, and bring back reports to the committee. This is a, this takes the onus off the director. We also invite guests from different sectors of Clearwater and area to our meetings so that we can give, be given updates on activities within their organizations. I, I E, R C and P, Tourism Wells Gray and Chamber of Commerce. Each me, every meeting, each member gives a report on happenings in their area. So you see, we are a committee that gives more than just recommendations. In discussion notes is states that we make policies which we do not, which we do not do. We state that the day-to-day operation should be the response, you state that the operations of the day-to-day should be responsible over the staff. I agree, and it is done by Sheri Madden, who is a staff member. Sheri makes sure that we are kept on the straight and narrow. You state that the TNRD Board. Has not delegate, has, has not delegated decision-making responsibilities, including budgets to the committees. We do not make final decisions about the budget. We review and question the budgets and then make recommended acceptance to the board. Sheri complies, compiles the budget and presents the budget to the committee. This committee is the voice of Area A and the majority of residents who know, know who to talk to with their concerns. They either speak with the director or committee member to bring forward, and all meetings are open to the public. Since I have been a director, the committee has not brought forward any new service establishments. Most new services are asked about at my, at my yearly community meetings. Or me personally, and then are forwarded to the appropriate staff to investigate. New services are up to the elector, not to the committee. Wells Gray Services Committee is a local, the the last local committee in Area A. I believe that we have to maintain local autonomy. Is this not one of the reasons the TNRD was formed for governance and the like, the residents to have a say? You say that you will have a public meeting twice a year and working groups and maybe organize an advisory committee instead of committee now in place. I say, yes, you have public meeting. Yes, you have public means to keep the residents informed. But from my experience with public meetings, attendance is very low or non-existent. Also, Upper Clearwater and East Blackpool will be a disadvantage because they have no local services. I cannot see them attending the public meetings due to distance and interest. Birch Island has never attended a meeting in Vadenby or Blackpool, so only the people you most likely will have attending the meetings in Vadenby and Blackpool. Will be their residents. Um, that's concerning the by week, the vice, the semi-annual meetings. We used to have many committees within the communities, which is now, which have been since dissolved when they came under the W C. Uh, the Wells, Wells Gray Service Committee umbrella. I remember when both Vadenby and Blackpool Fire Departments had a committee not long ago. And the Regional District took that responsibility away and said, you can have an advisory committee. This did not last long because the people on the committee said, why attend a meeting that you do not have any say or responsibilities? They all quit, eroded the local input again. Yes, revise by law, revise the by law, but leave the committee as it is. Also, I'd like to be part of the revision, along with Sheri Madden. To me, I believe it is essential to keep the Wells Gray Services Committee as it is with a few changes in the bylaw. The committee knows what most of our communities wants and requirements. Because they are residents also of the community. Centralization is not the answer. We have seen a lot of centralization in rural entities over the years, and all it does is cause dis- get, discuss. Discontentment, anger and increased in of costs. I have yearly community meetings in each area and bring residents up to date on TNRD issues and initiatives. We also discuss what local issues are and how they would like me to help them. If I am director, I will continue the yearly meetings, but that is not to say another director will do so. The Wells Gray Service Committee is an important part of the fabric and and has an immense role to play. I understand Area B has problems with their committee, but Area A committee is a blessing to the director. I would like, okay, can I make a motion or do I agree to the?
I'm sorry, Director Schaefer, your question?
Can I make a motion?
The, the recommendations on the, on the floor is moved and seconded. I take it you have spoken at length against the recommendation?
Yes.
And if no further motion required, it'll be, it'll be taken to a vote, and, uh, if if your thoughts prevail, it'll be defeated.
And then I can bring back motion.
Pardon?
Then I can bring back a motion?
A new motion?
Yes.
Uh, if it's defeated, I think, yeah. Well, I'm sorry, if.
I ask people to not support this.
If it's, I mean, if it's passed, I I see no reason you can't bring a new motion. Is there, Ms. Campbell?
It depends if it's contrary to this motion, and if it passes.
Yeah, right. I guess maybe only if it's, only if it's defeated.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Director Kershaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is, is there a, a, a way that a rural director like Director Schaefer can have these committee meetings? That don't have to be as evolved as this is, so that they can have it, only affects their own area, within their own area?
Yeah, and so I I could speak to that, and and going back to that complicated whiteboard diagram that we drew, um, we. When we, before we, we, we put a lot of thought in into into these recommendations, and I I appreciate where Director Schaefer's coming from. And we did meet with her and to discuss her concerns, um, a couple of weeks ago. Now, the the short answer is yes, um, there's other mechanisms to have committees, um, that, you know, uh, on a. For example, working groups on on specific issues, um, or any working group can be formed in different mechanisms for different purposes. Uh, but the, the, uh, if I can go back. What we concluded was instead of creating individual committees or trying to maintain these individual committees that we refocus the effort on more broad. Consultation to include input from community wide instead of select community members. Now, I appreciate Director Schaefer. I disagree with that, but that's. Why we ended up with this working groups for specific services that require kind of the expertise and stakeholders. And then broad, more quote unquote, general consultation, uh, community wide for the. T N R D general services.
I don't have committee meetings whatsoever, but they seem to be working well for Director Schaefer, only in that one little area, but. Uh, I think it's sort of an anomaly within within her area and I I'd like to see them be able to keep that within her area somehow. But I don't think it has to affect the rest of the board much.
Mechanism for that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to support Director's Schaefer's notion.
Sorry, Director Quinn, can you move your mic a little closer, please?
Hello. I'm going to uh, support Director Schaefer's notion. One of the beauties of the regional district is we're all different, but we have common goals. And Director Schaefer is not faced with the challenge of bylaw that says our committee can. And that's the that's the real difficulty. So we can have both. And so I think Carol wants us to defeat this motion. Is that correct? Thank you. I will be supporting a defeated side of the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Quinn. Director Rice.
Yeah, I I will also be voting against this. Simply for a couple of reasons. One of the reasons is she's obviously established some incredible relationships with. Some members, some important members of her community, and that's what we all aim to do as electoral area directors because they're spread out and they're hard to come by. So she's obviously worked hard and long to establish these relationships. The new director comes in and decides to do a new way, but. Dissolve this committee now right before the election and 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 those relationships also and stuff. I just don't think it's the right time to. To entertain that, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Ms Campbell. Did you wish to comment at this point?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I I just wanted to follow up on Director Kershaw's questions. So. Electoral area directors are always welcome to to form their own sort of. Ad hoc groups or committees and and get public input and community input from members that that can certainly happen. It would just not necessarily have. Direct staff involvement and there'd be no statutory requirements attached to that. And the other thing to keep in mind is that should the board wish to maintain this committee, it can't mean it can't continue in its current form because it it has not been delegated the authority that it. Is currently exercising. And so the terms of reference. We're proposing that all bylaws be repealed for all committees and they would be replaced by a terms of reference. And so there would need to be significant changes made to this terms of reference, including potentially looking at whether or not it would be a statutory committee. Would it be better as an advisory committee, which which could still certainly provide advice and recommendations to the board? But it would just, it would just sort of change the the composition, not not the membership, but it would change. Just sort of how it's operating right now. So it's just something to keep in mind.
Thank you. That second concern that you raised is something that's troubling me greatly too. Director Brown.
Uh, that was my issue. I love the fact that Carol has this. Committee or meeting or whatever we want to call it set up with the community, and I think that needs to be maintained because it works for you. What I have issue with is the authority, the day to day operations and decision making of that committee. Uh, which hasn't been delegated by the board. And and that becomes a liability to the rest of us. So. It also may be a benefit to us, but it's still a potential liability. So I would like to see it. You maintain. Not called a committee, but called. Engagement, exactly. But the decision making. Isn't delegated by the the board and and that's the issue for me as well.
Thank you. I have Director Watson and Director Schaefer.
And I agree with Director Brown. They the whole concept of. Getting input from your community is what we want. It just. Uh, needs to be. Different than it is right now.
Thank you. And Director Schaefer.
We don't make, we don't make budget decisions. We make recommendations. There is no, there is no, uh, we make recommendations for everything we do. We don't make motions to go forward with things. And advisory committees have not worked in our area. Every time we have an advisory committee, they all quit. Because if they don't have and they don't have. Because they felt they don't feel that the regional district listens to what the advisory committee says. So. They all quit on us. That's why I want to maintain what I've got because it works well in my area. Very well.
Director Brown and Director Roden.
I'm kind of lost. At first, you say it's not an advisory committee. We don't make decisions. And recommendations come forward, but where do they come forward to? They come forward to the board or to the staff?
I'm still confused.
I was gonna say. Committee. Should be coming to the board, not the staff. That's. My understanding, but we just, we just pushed one through yesterday, a recommendation from our committee concerning. The museum in Baden. We do that quite regularly.
So if I I I'm a little confused too, Director Schaefer, what you're saying is. That you're not an advisory committee, but you do act the committee that you do have, that the existing structure, you do act in an advisory capacity. Is that correct?
No, we act as ordinary committee. We don't act, well, I guess you could say it's advisory. I'm just saying that anytime that we lose a committee. And we come in back with an advisory committee. We don't, we end up with no advisory committee, and I honestly believe that we should keep things as local as possible and have local input. Instead of centralizing everything back to Campbell's. And I don't have a problem with changing the bylaw, updating it. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with. People coming up. I think they should. I think. They should make more, be seen more in our area. Than they are now. But I'll tell you right now, any public meeting we go to that isn't contentious. You don't get very many people coming to it.
Uh, Director Roden.
Uh, thank you. Just one thing that popped out. I I don't doubt that you have a wonderful group of people right now. They won't always be there. So that's just the obvious thing that came to me and all the community groups and organizations I know of are. Saying that it is getting increasingly difficult to find volunteers who are willing to devote their time to anything. And also, I I I'm sorry, I admit that I'm I'm getting confused about. Why? If it's the X committee, people will come and be part of it, but if it's the Y committee, people. Act like it's holy water and they're vampires or something. I I just don't understand why. The designation of it being such and such a committee is apparently a barrier to people serving on the committee.
Director Rice.
I may be wrong, but I think I sort of understand it. I'm I'm not sort of confused. I think what Carol is saying, once you put it in that public. Meeting forum, that format, that business model. That's when the problems sort of begin and that's sort of what I see is sort of being proposed here. With the last committee and the headwaters committee and then this one also and stuff like that. It might work for the headwaters. But in her case, I also have that problem where to the point where if it's a public meeting, it gets contentious. Nobody ends up coming to the meetings. I have the same issues in my area. So public meetings are not. Good. Director Laird mentioned Joe. And Joe says, I gotta, we gotta come have a public meeting in Spencer's Bridge. I says, well, let me call the R C M P and I'm not, this isn't funny. That's what we have to do. So I sort of get, is that what you're sort of saying when it goes to a public meeting forum? That it it becomes problematic a little bit and you lose those people.
It doesn't become problematic. It's just people aren't interested.
Okay. Uh, Director Christian?
Yeah, I I hesitate to weigh it in. I I kind of feel. Kind of feel like the the mother of the groom and the mother of the groom is always supposed to stay quiet and wear beige. But, you know, it strikes me that one of the things that we do here well is take direction from the persons most affected by the decision we're about to make. And if this is Director Schaefer's wish, for whatever reasons that she has and whatever works there, then my notion would be that we should accede to that.
Thanks, Director Christian. I think that I get that's the general sense and the board, uh, Ms Campbell.
Thank you, Chair Gills. I just, just going back to the sort of nature and structure of this committee, so it's. It's one of those committees that's actually not listed as one of our statutory committees. It's not listed as a standing committee. It's not listed as a select committee. So when we were doing this work and putting this presentation together, we're trying to figure out what? What kind of committee is it? Because our other committees reference the legislation, the Local Government Act in in their terms of reference and their mandate. But this one does not, as similarly, the Thompson Headwaters doesn't. So we're actually already kind of calling it an advisory committee. So by reframing it as a as an advisory committee, it is in no way, and I I mentioned this earlier in my slides, that. The board has the ability to take direction. Uh, sorry, not take direction, take advice and recommendations from an advisory committee. So by reframing it and restructuring it as an advisory committee would not impact the membership. It would just impact the terms of reference and the mandate. And the and sort of limiting the decision, taking away sort of really any decision making that this committee might currently have. And while, you know, Director Schaefer's comments are that the committee is not is not doing that, the reality is their terms of reference says that that's what they're, that what they should be doing. And in some cases, I I believe, and Mr. Vera can weigh in that perhaps sometimes that that direction is going to staff. Um, or advice is going to staff and it's not, and it should actually be going to the board. So advice and recommendations should be coming forward to the board. So if if we maintain. This committee, it would just need to be a different version of of what it is now, but maintaining all of the all of the benefits that it provides.
I'm I'm wondering if there if I I I get the sense that this resolution is probably going to be defeated. And I'm wondering if that's the case, if we could just leave it at that and you can work together with Director Schaefer and find some kind of a solution to this question because it sounds to me. I agree with Director Christian. We we're. You know, let's listen to the person who's most affected by our decision. Uh, I I don't see any reason we can't defeat this and that you can work together with Director Schaefer to maintain. The the integrity of the. Of the committee. Although you may change. The terms of reference, I think they have to be changed, obviously, because they're they're legislatively. Um, unacceptable, but surely that we can work out something along those lines, can we not? Okay, I think at that point, I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the recommendation? One. Two. Opposed. The recommendation's defeated. Uh, Director Schaefer, do you still want to make a motion or would you rather just work with staff and see if we can put this something together that's acceptable to everybody?
I can work with the staff.
Thank you. Uh, that takes us, I think, to. On. I was hoping to get through number 10, but we're we're all ready at 11 o'clock and I think perhaps you should break for 15 minutes. And. And then reconvene and do the last half dozen. So we'll recess.
So. Hold on. I can beat it. I actually we can get that. Or maybe we can talk about the terms of reference, then we bring back the terms of reference. Or this into update. We're maybe to talk about the term references, then we bring back the terms of reference that will work this into an updated chapter.
We are back in session. Mr. Vera?
Thank you, Chair. We are on the downhill slide here. There we go. Okay. Moving forward, the Joint Services Committee, now this is also a committee specific to the North Thompson. So this was established in 2009, shortly after incorporation of the District of Clearwater. There's updates to the mandate in 2018. So the, as I mentioned before, the ownership of the sportsplex and the transit service was, the transit service was transferred to the District of Clearwater after incorporation. However, the T N R D does continue through those, the Electoral Area Service continues to contribute annual funding towards transit and sportsplex in a tune of 40% of that budget. Membership consists of Mayor of District Clearwater, one counselor from Clearwater, member of the public, T N R D Services Coordinator and Electoral Area Director. So the way it currently is structured is committee discusses items that are of common interests and make recommendations to Clearwater Council. And also makes recommendations to the Wells Gray Country Services Committee, who then pass it along, recommendations to the T N R D Board. So we got this scenario here where potentially an issue goes to three levels before it gets to the T N R D Board. So similar to the other committees we just discussed, we have some inconsistency and legislative concerns around the issues of the mandate and authority that this committee operates under in terms of the bylaw that hasn't been properly delegated by the T N R D Board. So the current bylaw lists strategic direction of this committee, strategic direction specifically to the services being the sportsplex as well as the transit service. However, in, in reality, we don't require strategic correction in operations of the transit service or the sportsplex on, on a regular basis. And our recommendation from staff is that strategic direction would be better to go directly to the T N R D Board and council and then executed by staff. Now, I do want to point out that there are, we do have joint services in a lot of other electoral areas with municipalities. And the model that we're proposing here to replace the Joint Services Committee is how we operate joint services in other electoral, electoral areas. So the proposed alternative is operate these directly through service agreements. So in the service agreement, it would lay out the accountability, the funding, reporting requirements, all of those requirements that we want to have in there get built into the agreement between the regional district and the municipality, regardless of who owns the infrastructure and who delivers it. So in this example, District of Clearwater owns and operates the sportsplex. The service agreement would lay out what the requirements are in terms of reporting requirements that the District of Clearwater has to the T N R D. I would recommend building in, you know, regular operational meetings between staff, could be a staff working group created around the operation of that facility or the joint service. Policy and strategic direction, if and when required, would go directly to councils and the board from the perspective, from the staff. Now, one of the important functions of this committee that we want to make sure is maintained is this, the other function of this committee is a mechanism for the Electoral Area Director to bring issues directly to District of Clearwater through this committee or District of Clearwater to share information and have discussions with the Electoral Area Director. So what we're proposing, and this was actually proposed by staff at the District of Clearwater, is a better mechanism would be to have the Electoral Area Director for A as a standing delegation on the District of Clearwater Council. So it's the, all of the council are, are present and then it's a mechanism that the director can directly address council, have input on issues, raise concerns, or just information sharing about the issues that impact both areas. Because I recognize that's often a, a topic that may not be directly responsibility of the T N R D or the District of Clearwater would be of interest of both of those parties, like for example, highways issues or RCMP or medical services, those types of things. And so we have worked with District of Clearwater staff on this proposed recommendation. So the recommendation is that the committee be dissolved and replaced with operating agreements between the T N R D and the District of Clearwater, specific to each joint service. And that the Director for Electoral Area A bring forward issues and updates directly to the District of Clearwater Council at their regular meetings.
Seconded. Is there any discussion, Director Quinn and Director Schaefer?
Just a quick question. Area B assist in transit funding. Is there a way of making sure that we're aware of, the area director is aware of times you may be discussing the transit issues as we fund a healthy portion of that? Thank you. Perhaps Director Blackwell, Director Schaefer can answer that.
Through the chair, if I may. Getting information from B C Transit is on the, the information side is like pulling teeth most of the time. But yes, I think we could loop you in on the reports that we get. That would be more than agreeable.
Let's just, Director Blackwell, Director Schaefer. Is there any further discussion? As you know, all in favor? Anyone opposed? That's carried.
All right, Tag in Indiana.
Moving away from our existing committees. As the board will recall, Director Singh, who unfortunately is not here, raised a notice of motion recommending that the T N R D establish a select committee on climate action. So this committee would be a select committee of the board. And it would be tasked with providing advice and recommendations on policies and plans to assist the T N R D adapting, mitigating, and reducing climate change impacts. So we committed to looking at the possibility of this committee as part of this review. So we did quite a bit of research, looking at other local governments to see whether or not they have climate action committees. And they're starting to become a bit more common among municipalities. And I, I believe we only found two regional districts that have a climate action committee, but they do have climate action plans associated with those committees as well as dedicated staff. So from a staff perspective, while we absolutely support the idea of a climate action committee, we don't currently have an action plan and we don't have dedicated funding, staff resources, or capacity that would be dedicated to a climate action portfolio. Directions coming out of this committee would certainly have to be acted upon by staff. And we just, we don't have the current funding or capacity to do that, or, or the expertise, to be honest. And so we're not trying to defer this to future board, but it potentially is something that the newly elected board may wish to explore in 2023. So as, as part of the strategic planning process of climate action initiatives and the committee are a priority of the board, then, then we would take that a step further with the board and, you know, require some direction in terms of like funding for that and what that would look like in terms of resources and potentially staff resources. So our recommendation at this time is that no action be taken on the establishment of a new climate action, a climate action select committee.
Move consecutive discussion, Director Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it's, it's interesting, climate's important, but why are we so eager to take on what are technically provincial and federal initiatives? If that recommendation said, and get money as well. Otherwise, it's going to add to our local taxpayer burden.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Director Blackwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I, I, I'm going to support the resident recommendation for now. I think we should wait till we get the next board in place. To Director Quinn's query. Climate change affects everything, every, pretty much aspect of every operation that we do within the T N R D and within our municipalities. And the second point being all that is that grant funding for environmental adaptation, climate change adaptation, is probably one of the few forms of grant funding that's going to survive the next 10 years. So having a say and having a, a idea as a board, as a region, focusing on that, I think is important moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Chair Gillis, sorry, if I may, just in response to Director Blackwell, one, one thing we should have noted, and I believe it's in the report, is that staff do continue to explore grant funding opportunities, of which there are many right now. And we do, climate action is, is a strategic priority in the, in the current plan. And so there's initiatives that each department addresses, but sort of off the side of their desk. So we, we are still committed to certainly carrying out the, the strategic priorities related to climate action in our current strategic plan.
Thank you. Anything further? Thank you, none. All in favor? Opposed, if any? Director Blackwell and Director Quinn are opposed.
We're just going to move on to some more procedural recommendations around our committees. So committee terms of reference, we've noted this a couple of times today. So historically, currently, all T N R D committees So committee terms of reference, we've noted this a couple of times uh, today. So historically, currently, all T N R D committees have bylaws rather than a terms of reference. The terms of reference is implied and contained in um, in the bylaws. So this has resulted in numerous uh, bylaws and amendments over the years. It's just important to note that bylaws are not required to establish a committee, um, only a terms of reference. The one thing that is required in the legislation is that committee procedures must be contained in a bylaw and they currently are. They're addressed in our board procedure bylaw. So uh, terms of reference should set out the scope, membership, and mandate, and it's much easier uh, to update if needed. So we are recommending that all committee bylaws be repealed and replaced with a new or updated terms of reference to be approved by the board. And as I noted previously, where there is a committee meeting uh, coming up, we will take a draft terms of reference to that committee for their review, input and feedback. And then we've opposed to bring one report with all new uh, term, all new term, terms of reference uh, to the board for approval.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'm seeing not all in favor. Opposed, if any? No one's opposed? That one's carried. Campbell?
Committee procedures. So as I noted, currently the board procedure bylaw addresses um, the procedures around committees. Uh, this requires that appointments to committees happen each year. Uh, we found and, and we've heard some feedback from board members as well that the one-year term is quite short and it doesn't leave a lot of time uh, to delve into committee work. Currently, the same process for election of chair and vice chair is followed for committee chair and vice chair. Uh, this obviously gives directors a really great opportunity to take a leadership role, chairing committees. But again, the one-year rotations are quite short, especially given that there are very few um, committee meetings. So committees meet a lot less frequently than the entire board. So our first recommendation is that committee appointments occur once every two years to allow a two-year term um, for members to be a part of the committee.
Is that? Second, moved by Director Herschaw, seconded by Director Christian. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, if any? Directors Rothenberger and Blackwell are opposed. It's carried.
And then our second recommendation is that committee chair and vice chair be elected for a two-year term.
This is with respect to committees.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing not all in favor? Opposed, if any? Directors Rothenberger and Blackwell are opposed. It's carried, um. Ms. Campbell?
So frequency of committee of the whole meetings as, as noted, um, with the uh, dissolving of some committees, we're going to be bringing more to committee of the whole. So we propose to increase the frequency of committee of the whole and as noted, electoral area director meetings. So this will mostly be addressed in December of twenty twenty-two when we prepare the board meeting calendar. But in the meantime, we would propose having a additional committee of the whole um, for September. So we're just recommending that the frequency of committee of the whole meetings be increased to address issues and matters which affect the entire region and board.
Moved, seconded. Any discussion? Director Blackwell.
Yeah, I mean, it's one, one concern I always have with the board is, is the number of overnights um, and extra days we spend here. I agree with the idea of more committee of the whole meetings, but I really wish we could have more meetings in one day. So we're not spending two nights or three nights and gameloves on a regular basis.
I'm sorry, Director Swan?
Thank you, um. More frequent committee of the whole will increase expenses for the T N R D. And I feel it would be appropriate if some board members wished to attend virtually, that they were given that option to decrease the expenses to the T N R D. Thank you.
Okay, that's uh, noted Director Swan, and I think the question of uh, of uh, virtual appearances is going to come up at some time soon in the future, is it not, uh, Ms. Campbell?
Correct. So as a result of some of the changes that have happened here today and provided the board approves, we will be uh, updating the board procedure bylaw because there'll be some updates that need to be made. And there's a number of other items that have come up over the last year um, that we'd like to bring forward to the board.
Director Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I know it's more expensive to uh, have meetings, but and we say it does cost, but we should also look at the value you get for dollars. And we don't discuss that. And I think the more of the meetings that we have, uh, the better function the board as a whole of it does. And yeah, it costs a little bit more money, but again, we also need to figure out the value for it. And if there seems to be a, and we have said that we need more committee of the whole and we need more electoral, there has to be value for it and I think it's there. So I think that shouldn't be really, it should be noted, but not a, a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anything further on the recommendation, Director Roden?
Uh, not directly on the recommendation, but part and parcel. Thank you very much to staff for this extremely comprehensive report. I don't know about anyone else, but I learned a lot uh, about the origins of some of these committees. I think staff did an excellent job of telling us all how and where and why and when they started. And also something I found very uh, useful was how beneficial are they to staff? Because at the end of the day, that's what's going to come out of these committee meetings is directions to staff. And if staff are saying, why? I think that's an excellent reason. And also to the municipal governors here, we did this in Ashcroft. It's not a pleasant experience, but making your committees justify their existence is a really good thing to overhaul and everyone tends to put it off because it's really dreary. And I get it, but it's a really good exercise to go through, um, especially with a new council because it teaches them a lot as well. So thank you to staff for all the hard work on this. I know how many months it's taken.
We have a recommendation. Moved and seconded. Uh, the no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed, if any?
Move to adjourn.
We have, we have one, one more item that I just need to get.
You can't, we're adjourned. Go ahead, Deanna.
Um, so First Nations representation on our committees, this has uh, come up a couple of times um, and the question about this. So I, I just want to briefly provide the legislative context. So the local government legislation currently only permits treaty First Nations um, to be elected as members on a regional district board. As some of you may be aware, there are very few treaty First Nations in B C. So the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples Act, this is B C legislation um, that was implemented, I believe in twenty nineteen. And it implements the U N Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. One of the things that the declaration, I'm going to just call it Dripa, Dripa requires is that the province ensure that any new uh, legislation and current legislation um, aligns with the U N Declaration and it's also a requirement, the provincial government must come up with an action plan on how they're going to um, implement the U N Declaration. So this action plan was developed and released in twenty twenty-one and does have um, some potential impact on local governments. So one of the action items, support inclusive regional governance by advancing First Nations participation in regional district boards. So other regional districts have responded to this um, and have been, have been exploring opportunities for more inclusive models of governance and decision-making between local governments and their First Nations. Um, a very um, uh, well-known example of this as a capital regional district, they amended their procedure bylaw in twenty twenty-one, I believe, to allow for First Nation membership on their committees. So while the legislation doesn't allow um, First Nation uh, membership on boards, the lo- local government legislation does allow the chair or the board to appoint non-board members to their committees. So from the T N R D's perspective, um, we do have over twenty First Nations uh, in our region. And while significant progress has been made, the T N R D does still have a great deal of work to do to strengthen engagement and partnerships with our First Nations in the region. And we will continue to explore opportunities to work with our First Nations partners and engage in meaningful consultation to develop an engagement strategy. So the key there is that we, we don't currently have an engagement strategy. That's something that we were not able to execute on or put together. Mr. Hilda Brand may want to comment on that. Um, and so we would envision um, once we do have this First Nations engagement strategy developed, that it could include a more thorough examination of First Nations representation on T N R D committees. It's also important to note, and Director O'Reilly alluded to this yesterday, that future amendments to the legislation at the provincial level um, as a result of Dripa may eventually result in changes to uh, regional district board composition and the inclusion of First Nations. Province has not come out and said that explicitly, but they have come out and said that they will be um, making amendments to legislation um, in the future. And so we, we take that to mean that there is a strong possibility that there could be updates to the Local Government Act.
Mr. Hildebrand?
Thank you. If I just may add to that as well, is I think we've made some big strides um, with our First Nations locally and throughout the regional district, but we still have so much more to do. And I know that that's uh, has been on our, our strategic plan from over the last few years. And I would hope that the new board coming in will also extend that into twenty twenty-three and, and going forward. Uh, we've made a lot of uh, informal and um, but we, we got lots of work to do and uh, we are reaching out to more and more First Nations and making, and building better relationships. But I still think we we uh, we need to do more. So more to come on that uh, once we meet as a, as a new board uh, and set up a new strategic plan.
Thank you for that. Director Blackwell?
Yeah, I, I, as mentioned yesterday, I think um, community to community forums uh, like the one held in the North Thompson, the last one was actually hosted at Chushua by the SIM. Um, I think that's a great starting point, um, that person to person, everybody in the room conversation that happens at places like that um, should be the model for the rest of the T N R D.
If I could just add to that, Chair Gillis, I, I know there's one coming up in Merit with the five First Nations at the end of June that the T N R D has been involved or invited to as well. So we are making strides, but lots more to do.
Thanks, Mr. Hildebrand. I see nothing further, uh, Director Crow, Director Watson?
Just one, here in the city, the T N R D is invited to the C to C with five First Nations in uh, the Nicola Valley. Does that mean the entire T N R D board or just the local T N R D directors?
Yeah, so Mayor Brown might be able to add to this, but uh, the city, uh, the C A O there has kind of set this up as a, it's as a relationship we started many years ago with Merida and trying to get a an M O U together with them. And now they've also included the T N R D into that. So it's just kind of at its initial stages, but maybe Mayor Brown has more to add.
At this stage, we're only looking at M and N. Okay, thanks very much. In future, that may change.
Thank you. Director Crow?
Move to adjourn.
Stand adjourned.